Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as I give the invocation. Almighty God, we acknowledge that you will hold us to account for the way we legislate and administer the affairs of the township and its fine people. We pray for your guidance as we do so. We pray that you would find us protecting the rights of all at all times, that our community and this nation will fulfill all your purposes. Amen.
Amen.
All right. First, Kristy, please take a roll.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Mr. Christie here. Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. King. Here. Taylor is absent. Mr. McCray.
Here. For Ms. President. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
To the chair.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the agenda as president.
Support.
Supported by trustee Kennedy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next, we have two citizen comments. Michael Van Tol. There he is. You hiding back there?
Good evening Supervisor McCray and Redford Board of Trustees. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Michael Van Tol, legislative aide to Wayne County Commissioner Monique Baker McCormick. First, I just want to thank everybody who helped to make the Wayne County budget hearings a success right here in Redford a couple of weeks ago at the Redford Community Center, and that specifically is Teresa Stokes. Thank you very much for all your help. I just have one note on my agenda today. Commissioner McCormick is hosting a Getting to Know Wayne County event. This will be Wednesday, September 25th, at the 8th Precinct in Detroit. It's a brand-new historical 8th Precinct Annex that has been remodeled, so it's a brand-new center, so our event will be held there. We're going to have the Wayne County Clerk Kathy Garrett, William Jackson from Wayne County Seniors, Jai Amor from Wayne County Business Inclusion, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and Nicole Black, the Regional Director. Again, that's Wednesday, September 25th, 5:30 to 7:30, at the historical 8th Precinct Annex at 6 Mile near Grand River in Detroit. And again, thank you so much, Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Kelly, and I can't see how to say your last name now.
Is it Mitchell?
Yes. Okay. That's Pomona. Pomona, yep. Oh, that's all right.
Stand here.
Oh, no, up there, because you get to be on television and everything. So make sure you just sit at the mic where you can, so people can hear what you're saying, because other people may have the same feeling that you do.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having me today. To my Redford neighbors, thank you. My name is Kelly Mitchell, and I live at 16111 Pomona Drive. I'm here to ask for an ordinance for a 6-foot chain-link fence. I, right now, take care of my sister, who has mental disabilities. We have checked into fences, and we were denied the 6-foot because it's not, Redford doesn't approve those unless they're privacy. Well, we don't want to be held prisoner in our own homes, and that's how we feel with a privacy fence. We live on a corner lot. We want, we want to be able to see out past our property. We want folks to know that we have dogs. And with my sister, I have to keep a very close eye on her, and she cannot, at this time, go outside by herself, because I'm scared that she will get past the fence. And like I said, she has mental disabilities. She does not know her address. She doesn't know any of that. She has the mind of a 6-year-old. So with our privacy, it would be $15,000 to build a privacy fence. We've already checked into all of that. That's too expensive, and again, we just didn't want to feel like a prisoner in our own home. We, we have two neighbors, because we're on the corner. My neighbor behind us wouldn't have an issue with it, because when they moved in, we were going to extend the fences already there, but we couldn't, because it's 4-foot. I had spoken with Jeff Corden, because that's where I was directed the other day, and he told me to show up today and voice my opinion and see what we could do. I appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Okay. Next, we have a special presentation of the Beautification Commission Best Yard Awards. Gib Smith.
Ma'am, I appreciate what you're saying, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Where's my, where's my team? Okay. Are you going to do this? Okay. I want to do like this, and I want to go like this. And I have a speech, but I'm not going to say much. Every year, Redford Township Beautification Commission gives out awards for their beautiful homes, and this year, we had 32 nominations. And it was, as a commission, it was very tough, because there's beautiful homes in Redford, and we were so excited. And I was going to prepare, I did prepare a speech. I'm just going to do the cuff now. Wow. Um, how do we do this? Which one? Oh. Beautiful.
They're in the same.
Yes, they are. Wesley Hawkins?
He came and left already, but already got his bag and he gave him the sign.
Okay, cool. All right. Janet McWilliams. Janet, beautiful home. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Ms. McCray?
Yep.
Do we want pictures, or?
Yep. She says yes. Okay.
Oh, my God. I don't like pictures.
Well, you got to be in it anyway.
I'm going to be in it anyways. I got to deal with this. I got to deal with this stuff. Love you guys. Thank you. Thank you, charity. Donna Corey. Donna? Joseph Montoya?
All right.
Yes.
26275 Graham.
Yes.
That is not our house.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Wait, no. Yes.
No, that's not it. I'm 275 Graham, and I got to order it. That's not my house.
All right, we might have a structure to house, too.
Sorry, I'm too housing down from the country called.
I, I know, I know what the country called is. I live on Fox myself. Um, is this, was this a mistake then?
No, I'm 275. I'm telling the truth.
I'm sure your house is very beautiful.
Yes. Thank you. This one I didn't understand. 17684 Lanane.
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 Yep. Is that way it's up there?
That's A.
Okay, okay, let's go to the next one.
All right. Laura Monley.
There she goes.
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Jessica, our marketing director said, "Take photos."
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right, what else?
Next.
Yep. Thomas Spouse. Yeah. Thank you for keeping Redford beautiful.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
No, you get in the picture. Nick, you've been a commissioner a lot longer than I have. Come on, people. That's why I'm a politician, Pat.
Yeah, I see.
I know. Robert Kay. I know Robert can be here today. That was, um, yes, 9101 NAF line. I just found out, yes. He wasn't, Matthew Geiten, if I pronounced it correctly? Yes. Yes. I'm sorry. Matthew Geiten? 11368 St. Jose. Matthew? Okay. Tanisha Kilgore. 23036.
Thank you.
That's the clue.
I know.
So I just want to thank everyone for keeping Redford beautiful and, wait. Oh, no. No, 25036 Silver. I know. So white, oh, you said white. Okay. So anyways, I'm a senior in Redford, and I just want to, I appreciate everyone, everyone does in Redford. Let's keep it beautiful. And I had a big, like, long presentation thing, and now.
Great job.
Thank you. Thank you. I love you.
Okay, I want to, I just want to take a minute to thank the Beautification Commission for doing this. This is a great thing you all do for the township, and thank everybody that was here to receive their law sign and their award, and we appreciate everybody who does that. So thank you all.
Thank you. You guys got all your stuff?
All right. So next on the agenda.
Ms. Kane.
Give Ms. Kane. Ms. Kane.
Ms. Kane.
I didn't see that.
Well, Gib, right there, Gib.
Okay.
All right. Director Stokes, you are up.
I'm on my glasses today. Good evening, Honorable Board. Today, I am before you to do my Board of Trustees' presentation for my department, so you should have received the packet in your epics. Correct?
Correct.
So I just want to start out by going over just a little staff overview. I know most know, but we have currently in our recreational staff, we have two full-time recreation coordinators, one part-time afternoon building supervisor who does our evening activities. In the summer, we have our playground, summer food program, and our youth internship and seasonal staffing, and then we have multiple programming contractors and instructors. In our second division, we have senior and veteran staff. At the last board meeting, you appointed our new senior and veteran staff. So she has started, two weeks ago now. Everything is transitioning extremely well. We're very happy, and she has hit the floor running, so she has started programming and will be continuing to expand on the programs that we already had within our, in our budget. Under this division, we also have two full-time and one part-time dial-a-ride drivers. We do have an opening for a full-time dial-a-ride driver and one part-time, so that's currently being advertised, and then under that, we also have programming contractors and instructors. And then we have our parks staff and central maintenance staff, so we have one full-time parks leader, which one of our staff had moved into that role, and then we have one full-time parks maintenance, and we just posted for another full-time opening with that promotion to parks leader. And then we usually have three to four seasonal parks maintenance staff who run from April 1 through November 15 of every year. And then we all work together, obviously, on a daily basis to create programming to keep that going, so we're very excited. So just a recap of our 2324 services. So program classes from fall '23 until current, we've had over 4,300 registrations for programming and special events. We're currently signing up for our 2024 season, so that actually just kicked off pretty much this week. The office has been extremely busy with everyone signing up for classes. Our 2024 summer internship program, we did get a little late start on that. We got the grant this year extremely late, so we were only able to hire one current one, and then we just managed to hire two additional that will finish out in September, so they'll be, you'll see them around. They'll be helping out at Oktoberfest, they'll be helping in the office and after, obviously after their school hours. The summer food program came to a close mid-August, so once again, we hosted five sites. It was down from one site last year, but that just varies with the schools and what they're opening for that time. So over the summer, we distributed over 7,200 meals to Redford youth that included breakfast and lunch at the sites, and that is all free. It's a reimbursement program through the Michigan Department of Education, and, you know, thank you to all of the staff that participate with that, as well as South Redford School District. Their summer food staff, service staff has been amazing to work with, and Karen is, is great with that program. Our Redford Dance Program finished up in June of 2024. We had over 116 students that took over 289 classes a week at the community center. Among these were 23 competitive members that competed in both local competitions, as well as in Tennessee for Nationals, so they traveled down there and did extremely well. This year, we actually have expanded upon it and have included a tiny TUTS competition class, so that will add nine additional members to the 23 current members that we already have, and they will do local competitions again this year. This is our off year, so the following year, they'll do Nationals. Our Dial-A-Ride program, we've talked about this a little bit before, we were awarded the FTA grant July of '24, and we're receiving four replacement buses and one van through Smart. We're hoping to receive this mid to end of 2025, so basically, Smart says that once they order them, they will come in about eight to 12 months after that, so we'll be getting a brand-new fleet of buses and vans for the, for the Dial-A-Ride. Our senior services and programs have been expanding with new activities. Thank you to everyone that attended the 90th birthday. I heard it was extremely well-received. We celebrated several birthdays. We're very happy to include all of our caregivers with them. This was all funded by sponsorship, so that was great to be able to offer this free of charge to everybody. And then we've, once again, we've welcomed the Redford Senior Club over to the Redford Community Center, so they are now hosting all of their senior club meetings over at the community center, which ties together our senior services and programs. In our parks, in Glenhurst Golf Course, so this summer has been extremely busy. We, staff have prepped ball fields and athletic fields for over 500 of both internal and outside group games and practices, so some of those partners include the Farmington Cricket Club, the Redford Livonia Little League, Detroit Men's Senior Baseball League, and this year, we actually hosted Redford Union High School. Both their baseball and softball teams, as they made their new football field over at Redford Union. We were able to host all of their practices and games at our local parks. Our splash pad at Handy Park continued to be the destination for both residents and non-residents for Memorial through Labor Day, so that just finally closed for the season, but anytime that you'd be at the community center or Handy Park, it was extremely busy throughout the year. We will be doing some minor repairs over the spring before it opens up in the fall, so we're hoping to have that open on time. The Craft Parking Lot was completed in the fall of 2023, and then, once again, we were awarded the MADC $250,000 for grant for the walking paths at Claude and Handy Parks. They were completed in July of '24. It's created a more accessible path for biking and walking for all of our township residents. We've already seen an increase at the Walkers over at Handy Park on a daily basis. They're there in the mornings. If you're interested, you can come join them. And then partial funding from the additional $750,000 from the MADC grant for park improvements is being used for the demolition of the old tennis court. This was approved at the last meeting as well. We're going to be renovating this into pickleball courts at Handy Park. We had our pre-con meeting actually yesterday, so we were able to meet with a contractor on-site. They're just waiting for their soil erosion permits to come in, and then they'll be able to go ahead and start that project. We're hoping to be done by the end of the year, but depending on how the weather is, the concrete, as well as the top coating, can only go on if the weather is a certain temperature, so we're hoping that we have a little bit milder weather for a little bit longer, and then they'll be able to complete that this summer, fall. And then, once again, I mentioned our current full-time parks maintenance. A staff member was promoted to our parks leader position as of May 28th and completed his 90-day trial period. He has been doing great in this position. Anything we can ask, he has shifted gears if needed to, so they have done an extremely wonderful job in the parks this year with the limited staff that they have. And then Glenhurst Golf Course, I just wanted to give a little update. Current rounds of golf have increased from this time last year, so they're at 34,174 from April through August. We anticipate these numbers to continue to increase with the weather over the past month. And then the new groundskeeper or grounds master was purchased for the course, and we'll be looking to our current golf cart fleet to possibly add some additional carts for And then finally, I'm going to go ahead and transition, because a lot of what we've been working on is the new Recreation and Wellness Center project, so, Teresa, really quick. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Can you mention a little bit about the batting tunnels?
Oh, yes. So the batting tunnels were paid for with Wayne County Parks Milage funding, so we purchased two batting tunnels. One will be at Craft Park, and the other one will be at Claude Allison Park. We will be getting those, the ground sleeves installed within the next one to two weeks, and then we'll go ahead and put those, the remainder of them on in the spring. We just don't want to put them next up, and then it winter, in over the weather, it winters and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So before I transition, does anybody have any questions on my specific report?
No.
No?
Transition.
All right. So now I'm going to go ahead and transition over to the Recreation and Wellness Center. Robert Stempian, who is our owner's rep, is here. He has created a great presentation for you, and he will come up and go through it with you. If you have any questions, I can come up at the end.
Maybe there's little apps.
They have to track it over.
Yeah. Is it?
It's just going to be on a second window, like on your desktop, and it needs to move onto the extended display.
Okay. Let's see if I can reload. It's not coming up.
Well, thank you, everybody, for allowing me to present tonight, and tonight, I'm just going to give a brief presentation on the status of our Redford Township Recreation and Wellness Center. A little update on construction schedule and the budget associated with the, the project. I'm just going to start off to talk a little bit about team assembly. As you know, we are the owner's rep for this particular project. We also have our architect, HED, and also our constructor, which is Frank Riewall and Sons, but that's basically the core team along with Redford Township leadership. Outside of that, we do have a lot of different individuals or firms that are associated with the project, ranging from civil engineers to technology designers to fitness equipment designers, furniture folks that will basically help us procure the furniture for this engagement. We also have material testing company, G2, involved. DTE, of course, with, you know, providing a transformer for this project and electrical needs, and FISC, which is a commissioning agent associated with commissioning the equipment after it's installed. As far as the construction update, we had a ground break on May 10th of this year. You can see in the background some heavy equipment, which you probably noticed that is, there's a lot of activity on the site currently with this heavy equipment, pushing a lot of dirt around. This is a, an aerial photograph of, of the site, each, or each daily being on the right-hand side of the screen, and this is an overlay of the floor plan on top of the aerial photo. So this gives you some idea of the layout of the building with the gymnasium on the left-hand side and some of the core functions on the right-hand side. Just to give you a better picture, this is a, an aerial of the walls being erected, showing the two-story gym, the lockers, pool area. In the front, we have the all-day purpose room where the main entry is. To the left and to the right of that main entry, we have the office administrative function and check-in area. Also on the site, we have two entries, one off of Beach Daily and one just to the south where the Country Club is. We also have a sloped lawn area, which will be like an entertainment space with the amphitheater function. Well, thank you, everybody, for allowing me to present tonight. And tonight, I'm just gonna give a brief presentation on the status of our Redford Township Recreation and Wellness Center, a little update on construction schedule and the budget associated with the project. I'm just gonna start off to talk a little bit about team assembly. As you know, we are the owner's rep for this particular project. We also have our architect, H.E.D., and also our constructor, which is Frank Riewall and Sons. But that's basically the core team, along with Redford Township leadership. Outside of that, we do have a lot of different individuals or firms that are associated with the project, ranging from civil engineers to technology designers to fitness equipment designers, furniture folks that will basically help us procure the furniture for this engagement. We also have material testing company, G2, involved, DTE, of course, with, you know, providing a transformer for this project and electrical needs, and FISEC, which is a commissioning agent associated with commissioning the equipment after it's installed. As far as the construction update, we had a ground break on May 10 of this year. You can see in the background some heavy equipment, which you probably noticed that is, there's a lot of activity on the site currently with this heavy equipment, pushing a lot of dirt around. This is an aerial photograph of the site, each daily being on the right-hand side of the screen, and this is an overlay of the floor plan on top of the aerial photo. So this gives you some idea of the layout of the building, with the gymnasium on the left-hand side and some of the core functions on the right-hand side. Just to give you a better picture, this is an aerial of the walls being erected, showing the two-story gym, the lockers, spa, pool area. In the front, we have the multi-purpose room where the main entry is to the left, and to the right of that main entry, we have the office administrative function and check-in area. Also on the site, we have two entries, one off of Beach Daily and one just to the south where the country club is. We also have a sloped lawn area, which will be like an entertainment space with the amphitheater function adjacent to the building. We have a large parking lot to the right-hand side of the site, and there's an east lawn area, it's kind of faint texturing over there, adjacent to the building, which will be a landscaped open area in front of the building. So this just shows some photographs of some of the construction that's ongoing, of the erection of the gymnasium walls with the masonry block wall. This will be cladded with a brick exterior. That work will start gearing up this month. So most of the walls are already erected on the site. I think we're making very good progress construction-wise when as far as the masonry is involved, and they're prepping the walls to receive the structural steel, which will come in October. These are just some other photographs of showing different areas of the building, starting with the multi-purpose room, which is adjacent to the front entry. We have their administrative offices, which is to the right of the main entry. We also have a partner space that's in front of the building on the east side, so we're looking to build out some certain functions in there as well, and the main lobby area looking east. So this will change drastically once we get the steel erected and we start building the floors, the second level floor for this facility. Also, some photographs of the gym. I'll try to do some before and after photos or progression photos as we develop, you know, these particular areas, the gym areas and the locker spa area and different aspects of the project. As far as project schedule, we're tracking quite well. I've included a three-month look-ahead schedule. It's also in the dashboard, which I believe is on the table over here.
I'll pass it out to them.
Okay, great. So that kind of gives you a snapshot of what's going to occur in the month of September, October, and November. What you'll see happening on the site is the brick veneer starting to go onto the building. There's a lot of land site balancing that they'll do by excavating out the parking lot, the dirt, prepping that for the underground utilities and underground storm detention. You might see some large plastic tubing that's on-site. That's the underground detention system that they'll be installing underneath the parking lot. And then, coming up in October, we'll get our delivery of the structural steel, so they can start erecting the roof, which I'm sure that the builders will be very happy to see, because once it's, the roof is on, they can start enclosing the building and getting ready for construction activities to continue into the winter. As far as November, we'll probably finalize the brick veneer on the exterior of the building, start prepping for putting in the floor slab right after they do the underground plumbing. So they'll start putting in like the drains, the toilets, the, you know, piping, the supply lines and whatnot, underneath the slab, and then pouring the slab in November. Then they'll start planning for the light gauge metal studs that will kind of define the walls, the spaces within, once the floor slab is finished out. As far as project budget, when we started the program, we set up project budgets associated with specific aspects of the project. Construction, it was basically $15 million. Professional services, $2.2 million. Permits, we allocated a certain dollar amount. You know, this would be permits for, let's say, Wayne County for the stormwater detention system and whatnot associated with the project, soil erosion fencing. We also have fixtures, furniture, and equipment, which we call FF and E, and also technology. So this is something that we're carrying a budget for, and along with the owner-controlled contingency of $2.2 million to $2.3 million, which gets to your total project value of $21.5 million. So this is like a status of where we're at today. With the $21.5 million budget, we have certain project commitments on this. This would be for construction and professional, or professional aspects of this project. It could be commissioning, it could be material testing and whatnot. So this has all been accounted for in the project commitments. Actuals approved to 2.4. The actual cost to complete is $15 million. That's taking item B and a C, that gives you that $15 million. And then, we have unallocated, well, you have forecasted commitments, which is 2.7. These are items that we expect to potentially cost to incur, like, for instance, we haven't bought out the furniture or the fitness equipment. That will come later, but we have line item budgets to accommodate that dollar amount. Given that, we have another unallocated reserve, which is basically owner-controlled contingency, and that will equate to the $21.5 million. So, right now, I would say we're in a very good financial position with this project, with a very healthy contingency, even with the forecasted items that we plan on spending on the project. I think we're in a good spot. It's always good to carry a healthy contingency on a project for unforeseen conditions, but we're not tapping into that with anything major and anything that is forecasted going forward. Since we're out of the ground, a lot of the risk, a lot of the unknowns have been taken care of. So as we build, there might be some minor hiccups here and there, but we don't anticipate this to be a major item associated with the project. So with that, I was wondering if you have any questions?
Questions on the board? I think, I just wanna, or think about what questions they might have or not. I want to say that this is a pretty amazing project, that we've been following this along from where drawing lines are on a piece of paper to actually seeing some things happen out there. And the look of the building's gonna change rapidly, up until winter time anyway. It won't look like it does now at all in just a few short weeks. I do wanna congratulate the team that we have here at Redford Township that has been at these meetings and made sure the information and the permits and all the different things get done. Teresa Stokes has been stellar at making sure everybody stays on task. And Robert, it was a good idea that we hired somebody to manage a project, so we don't get in trouble, and I think he's done a great job with that. So, other than that, any questions you all have? I think we have the people here to answer them. If not, we'll get the answers, but this is a project that the whole township can be very proud of. And again, we're on schedule, we look like things are going well, and I feel very confident we'll come in within budget, maybe a little bit, but for sure, within budget, right?
Strike.
So, any questions from the board?
No.
None. Great job all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the consent agenda items. Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Supervisor McCray. I move to approve the consent agenda items as follows: the minutes of the study session of August 27 of 2024, the minutes of the regular meeting of August 27 of 2024, the warrant list of bills as of September 5 in the amount of $3,161,638.59. The 18th Annual Redford Township Oktoberfest Fall Festival, September 20 of 2024 through September 21 of 2024.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. Any discussion? Here any none? All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business. That be Mr. Chubb.
Good evening, Board. Tony Chubb, General Counsel for the Township. So, all of the unfinished business items, 1, 2, and 3 are all related to revisions that were made to the code regarding animals, conduct with the animals, and then licensing. I know that you spoke with, about them in detail in the first reading, and so I just wanted to provide that into the second reading, there's only been one change that's been made, which was a clarification to unfinished business item number 3, which is license, speaks to licenses. And what we did was add a subsection E, which is at the bottom of the ordinance, that clarifies that under Michigan and applicable federal law, actually, that service dogs, as defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act, are exempt from licensing fees. And so, if you do have a service animal and you're a resident of the township, when you get your permits, you are not required to pay the licensing fee that we referenced. Other than that, everything's the same as the first, it was at first reading. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions on the board? Okay, we're gonna need three different motions on this. So if there's no questions...
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the second reading of Municipal Code, Chapter 18, Article 2, Division 1, Section 18-35, running at large, prohibited, leash or restraint required. Support.
Supported by Trustee Jackson. So the motion is to approve the second reading of Municipal Code, 18, Article 2, Division 1, Section 18-35, running at large, prohibited leash or restraint required. Roll call vote. Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King? Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Motion passes.
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move for the approval of the second reading of Municipal Code, Chapter 18, Article 2, Division 1, Section 18-36, barking, yelping prohibited.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. Motion is approval of the second reading of Municipal Code, 18, Article 2, Division 1, Section 18-36, barking and yelping prohibited. Any questions from the board? Roll call vote. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King? Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion passes.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee King?
I move approval of the second reading of the Municipal Code, Chapter 18, Article 2, Division 1, Section 18-51, licenses required, application requisits penalty.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. Motion is approved. Approval of the second reading of the Municipal Code, Chapter 18, Article 2, Division 1, Section 18-51, licenses required, application requests penalty. Any discussion?
To the Chair.
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
I just want to thank our law firm for adding that, because we do have residents that want to make sure that we are either allowing them to not have a license or where it's printed as to who we look at for guidance. So, thank you again.
Any other questions? Roll call vote. Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King? Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have new business, number 1. Mr. Jablonski, Director Jablonsky, please.
Evening, Supervisor. Members of the board, I'm here tonight to ask for your approval of sale of township-owned property at 26029 West Five Mile Road. Redford Charter Township purchased the property December 21, 2011 for $23,894. The purchaser is Mohammed Razi, M.D. The use will be for medical office. The property is Zone C2, and the use is permitted under C2 zoning. Contract price is $150,000. The purchase agreement approved by Redford Township Attorney George Countess, and the real estate taxes after the sale will be $11,900 estimated by Jessica Grazer. And tonight, I'd like to ask the, well, I should say, the Downtown Development Authority, at its meeting of August 28, had made a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to sell the property. Therefore, I ask for your approval for the purchase agreement and the sale of 26029 West Five Mile, and ask for your approval to authorize the economic development record to sign the necessary transaction documents to complete the sale. You have any questions?
Questions on the board? Okay, so it's $150,000. Director Jablonsky, you're asking for authorization to sign...
The purchase agreement. For your signature and the clerk's signature is required on the purchase agreement. However, the documentation going forward, the closing documents, I'm asking for approval to sign on behalf of the township.
Questions on the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Director Jablonsky, was the purchase price something that was recommended by our assessors? When they assessed the value of the property?
The purchase price was negotiated. The estimate of appraisal for the property was prepared by Insight Commercial and a broker opinion of value. So the appraisal came in at $150,000 to $179,000. And so, through negotiation, the purchase price is $150,000.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Here any none? What's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move for the approval of the sale of 26029 West Five Mile, and proceed with acceptance of the term of the purchase agreement to sell the subject property to Dr. Mohammed Khalil Razi on behalf of an entity to be formed and issue a township resolution approving the sale, and approve Dr. Director Jablonsky with the ability to sign the agreement.
Support.
Okay, I just want to, friendly amendment on there, that it's for $150,000, the sale.
That is correct.
Right. Well, I need to have that in the motion.
Yes. Approving the sale for the amount of $150,000.
Yes.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. So the motion is approve the sale of 26029 West Five Mile, and proceed with acceptance of terms of the purchase agreement to sell the property, subject property to Dr. Mohammed Khalil Razi on behalf of the entity to be formed and issue the township resolution approving the sale of $150,000, and to authorize Director Jablonsky to sign closing documents. Any other questions?
Discussion.
Yes.
To Attorney Chubb. Do we have to approve the actual resolution? Because it even says it's to an entity that's yet to be formed.
Yeah, we would still want to approve it, so that we're showing the terms that we're accepting it to, but it's common that they won't set up the LLC until such time as the sale is approved by the selling authority, which is the township.
Okay, when will, when will we see the actual resolution to vote on? Or do we?
You won't need to see the final closing document. The final closing documents are signed by the supervisor, and the name of the specific LLC isn't really important for purposes of closing the sale.
Other questions from the board? Roll call vote. Mr. King? Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion passes. New business number 2, Director Jablonsky.
Mrs. Supervisor, honorable members of the board, I'm here tonight to ask for your approval of the amended Downtown Development Authority bylaws. The Downtown Development Authority, at their meeting... Authority at their meeting of August 7th, 2024, had recommended to the Board of Trustees to approve the DDA bylaws as prepared by Township Attorney Mr. Anthony Chubb. Mr. Chubb is here present tonight to answer any questions you may have about the bylaws.
To the chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
Um, when, um, Mr. Jablonski said that it was amended, we didn't get anything that would show us that it was changed or amended.
Sure, yeah. Well understood. We couldn't find it, is what, is the short answer.
Oh.
And so, um, they were governed, you know, the PDA is largely governed by our local ordinance as well as the state law that provides for, um, the, you know, the ability to create them. But you still want some basic bylaws, which these are, try to be pretty simplistic that set the number of people that are in it. Again, already was done by ordinance at the time they were created, sets forth the process of, of picking a chair, a vice chair, things like that. Um, so that's all that these intend to do, to ensure that they're, they have rules of operation that can be complied with. I started working with them about six months ago, I think, in detail, trying to make sure that everything was in appropriate form and this was the first thing to be noticed. And so I worked with, uh, the PDA Board to come up with these bylaws. But the short answer is the ones that were on record can't be located.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And will these be placed on the website?
I would certainly think they would be, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Very none. We'll roll call vote on this as well, because we lost it before.
Has the motion been set?
Oh, did we make the motion? I thought we did. I thought you motioned.
No.
Okay, I apologize. Let's put it in reverse. What's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move for the approval of the update Redford Township Township Downtown Development Authority bylaws.
Support.
Supported by Treasure Kavanaugh. Any other questions? Now we'll roll call vote.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, Mr. Chubb?
Sure.
Number three?
The next item that we have is the repeal of ordinance number 355. This was the ordinance that the Board adopted to prohibit marijuana establishments, that's recreational marijuana establishments within the township. Uh, as you're aware, subsequently, the implementation ordinance was adopted and this is inconsistent. We needed to, we need to repeal it so that we can move forward with the selection process and the granting of licenses. So this repeals it in its entirety. It's fully replaced with the process that's set forth in the new ordinance.
Questions from the board?
And this is a regulatory ordinance. It's not a zoning ordinance, uh, so it won't have to go to planning commission, but it still will require a second reading.
Okay, so we're looking to approve the first reading.
Uh huh. To the chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the first reading to repeal ordinance number 355 interim prohibition of marijuana establishments and facilities ordinance.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Jackson. Motion is approval of the first reading to repeal ordinance 355 interim prohibition of marijuana establishments and facilities ordinance. Roll call vote.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Taylor, yes. Uh, uh, Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries. New business number four.
The next item that we have is the furtherance of ordinance 368, which supersedes 355, which you just voted to begin the repeal process of. And within 368, there was a period of, I believe, 180 days that was set from its, um, effective date, uh, within which we needed to begin accept, to accept applications. We've decided that we will begin accepting applications on October 3rd at 9:00 a.m. and, uh, at, here at Township Hall. Um, and so this resolution simply established that as the beginning of the application acceptance date. And it also authorizes the officials to take the necessary steps in implementing all of the necessary documents, predominantly the application. Uh, I presume everyone that's interested is aware, we have a lot of really good information on the website already pertaining to the implementation process. It's our goal, uh, that we'll be on, the application will be on the website on Friday. Yeah, that's, that's our, that's our plan right now. And so, um, this simply allows for all of that to happen and it's going to provide for as smooth as possible of implementation of the application process as, as we can have.
Questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
On the resolution, which says be further resolved, it says city staff to finalize. Should that be township staff?
I greatly apologize. That should be township staff. I'd recommend, or I'd request that this be approved with that amendment. Thank you.
And the other question is, should the, um, motion include the date and time that we will be accepting applications?
It does in the first to be resolved, uh, dating October 3rd at 9:00 a.m. at Redford Township Hall.
No, I meant, uh, the actual motion.
Oh, the motion to approve the resolution?
Yes.
You certainly can do that. Sure.
Okay.
Other questions from the board? Yerina, what's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move for the approval of the resolution to establish application acceptance date for the recreational marijuana licensure and direct staff regarding additional application procedures, applications to begin, uh, accepted on October 3rd at 2024 at 9:00 a.m.
Uh, with the amendment, correct, from city to township.
Oh, with the corrected amendment.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. So the motion is to approve the resolution to establish the application acceptance date of recreational marijuana licensing and direct staff regarding additional application procedures on October 3rd at 9:00 a.m., 2024, with the amendment. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries. Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ren up, Mike. Come on down, Director Dennis.
Hop along.
Kinda do. Mr. Supervisor, honorable board, thank you for having us up here. Tonight, I'm asking for a recommendation, uh, for the approval of replacement of the existing exterior vestibule doors located near Town Hall. Uh, it'd be the set that's off the rear, uh, the parking lot, the front door, and the two single doors that are the employee entrances.
Yay.
Uh, we did a walkthrough, uh, through the, the building about two weeks ago. Uh, had three companies that showed up for it. Uh, it was not mandatory, but we had, had three, uh, three companies. For some reason, only one company did turn in their bid. That was Allied Building Services, uh, from Detroit, Michigan, the amount of $51,673. Uh, that was the only bid that was submitted out of the three folks that did do the walkthrough. I'm asking tonight to, uh, to ask the board to approve this bid and allocate the funds from Fund 402 Capital Reserve Fund.
To the chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
Uh, once we approve this, uh, when will they start and how much, how long will it take?
I can't answer that one. Start, because I don't know how long it takes to get those products. It could, I mean, it could be three weeks. It could be three months. Just depends on the doors. Um, I will tell you this, that it starts to get into early winter, probably will hold off until the spring, just because we don't want to have these doors open because they're going to be open. So if they can do it, if it's not so hard, of a harsh winter, they can always do the outside doors and then do the vestibule seconds. The only issue we're going to have on the two, two single doors is as there is no inside doorway on the two employee entrances. So it'll just depend on, on the season and how we get into the end order.
Okay.
I'll keep it all.
Yeah, can you make sure to let us, it's posted?
I do not want to have the doors open in mid-term.
Right. Yeah. No, because I know we've had quite a few issues with the doors not closing, the doors staying open and popping off. I mean, just a lot of things. So, yeah. Thank you.
Guarantee it.
Other questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Mike, since you only had one bid on this, did you have estimate what number in mind as to what you thought they were going to cost?
I thought probably right around $50,000. We, we actually got bids probably about five years ago. We just did not have the funds at the time. And they came around $40,000 with inflation and things of that nature.
$10,000.
It's the same bid, um, but with inflation, I, that's good.
But you thought it was big?
Yep. Right in that area.
Thank you.
Other questions?
To the chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
I move to approve the bid recommendation that DPS Redford Township Hall commercial entrance doors be awarded to Allied Building Service Company Detroit, Michigan, 48216, in the amount of $51,673 to be paid from Fund 402 Capital Reserve Fund.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Motion is approval of the bid recommendation DPS Redford Township Hall commercial entrance doors be awarded to Allied Building Service Company Detroit, Michigan, 48216, in the amount of $51,673 to be paid from the Fund 402 Capital Reserve Fund. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mike.
Director Washington?
Good evening, honorable board.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm here before you this evening on a few items. Our Employee Civil Service Commission was pretty busy in August. And, uh, the first one is on, uh, the 28th, at its meeting, the Employee Civil Service Commission approved the creation of the Leisure Services Program Manager classification and, uh, suggests a compensation level of a grade four, which is, uh, from 67,598 to 88,695. Uh, Director Stokes is here to answer any specific questions about the position. But this position is going to be very integral to the, uh, the recreation center. This person is going to be, uh, working, you know, as far as operating. You know, she'll be the operating, this person will be the operating manager.
No.
I got them mixed up. I apologize. Yeah. But this position is actually, um, uh, a merging of, of one of our current employees' positions with some added duties. So this position will, uh, expand the opportunities for our current staff. Um, that's on hand. And with that, I'm going to ask the, uh, board to approve the, uh, creation and the, uh, concur in the amount of the salary grade of grade four, um, which is, as I said earlier, 67, 598 to 88,695.
Questions from the board?
To the chair.
Treasure Kavanaugh.
Teresa?
Yeah.
When I read, um, some of the job description, I noticed that, um, it says that this person will step in when you are away or can't do certain things. So this is going to be your, your mini-me?
Actually, uh, the two positions that we're looking to create today, um, either one of them could step in. Um, this one does a lot more of the programming aspect of it. Um, so we're really looking at the longevity of the department, how to build it out and to create, um, sustainability. Um, so if you, um, look at kind of the way the org chart would be, the two of them would be on the same level. So that way, and then the next one that you'll be looking at will look more for the facility part of it. And then this one will be more of the programming aspect, which is, like we mentioned before, is going to mold some of the positions that's already, or the aspects and job duties that's already being done. Um, and, you know, in hopes that we'll be able to promote somebody into that position.
Oh, because I thought I read that it would step, that this one in particular would step into your shoes.
Correct. They can. Yes.
Okay. And so will the next one that we'll be voting on as well.
Yeah, I put this one specifically, but they're both going to be on the same level. Um, I really want to make sure that there are people there, especially with the added duties of the recreation center itself. I can't be everywhere, so I want to make sure that there are people trained in those aspects. So that way, if there is an issue or question and I'm not there that day, there is somebody that's qualified and experienced and knows, um, the programming and the recreation center to be able to step in and answer it.
Okay. Right. Okay, thank you.
Is that good?
I think.
Or do you?
I think.
I can talk to you.
Right. Yeah, okay.
I, to the chair. Uh, the other comment that, in the discussions that we've had about this too, is looking at the longevity. Part of the staffing recommendations, as we look at the recreation center, included the need to really have, um, like a manager-type position over there, which is the other position. So as we were talking about that, just as this department continues to expand and grow, really, that's why she's saying she really needs those people.
Okay. Because I know that the second job description was basically for the wellness center. Um, but I thought maybe this position would step in more as to what she does, but overall in the township, not so much with the wellness center, but as to her position to have. I, I equate it like, like a deputy.
I, it is kind of like a deputy, although in some ways she's kind of wanting to say she kind of wants to deputize both of them.
Uh huh.
Right. So whether or not one becomes more deputized than the other, once she knows who's in those roles, we'll kind of see, but they would be on equal level.
Okay. Because I would assume that, let's say, the second, this, this particular description, I would think had more duties than, let's say, the person that is in the wellness center itself to manage that. So again, I would think that there would be more duties for this job description than it would for the person that's going to be in the wellness center. I don't know how they're going to cross.
Different duties, more than more, per se.
Yeah, yes. Okay. Because I, I know this one would cross over more so than the wellness center.
Some of, well, and, and you might see that right now because currently we don't have like the wellness center.
Yeah.
So you're going to see a lot of those things that I currently already do are in this other one, um, or would need to be, you know, assumed. So I don't want to pigeonhole anyone. I'm really trying to cross-train staff. So that way, if there is an issue with, you know, if somebody happens to get sick or somebody's out for a long period of time, I really want those people to be able to know both of their jobs. So that way, you know, we see a lot, people get into that, well, I don't know, nobody ever told me about this. So then they're kind of stuck and nobody knows what, what they did. So I'm really trying to create this so that way there are people there in case there's any, you know, questions, concerns, so people can feel free to go on a vacation or, you know, take a day off.
No, and I'm, I'm, I'm behind the cross-training because that's what I do in my department is make sure that there's two people that know how to do a certain task.
Yes.
Um, I just think it's difficult because we don't have the wellness center, that we're trying to give salaries to what we don't know how, how many the one person's going to have for duties and the other, and we're going to have them same salary.
But, but we do.
We do?
We do, from doing market comparisons of what are those people doing in other communities with this type of a job description and role.
Okay.
And, but part of why it's coming up now is because we think, you know, the rec center is going to be open and upon us before we know it, right? I mean, it's been four months today since we broke ground, right? And so we want to make sure that that person, the next one in particular, can be part of this next stage. Like, we really want to fill that so that they can hit the ground running, no pun intended, as we get the rec center open, ready for opening.
And when would they, when would you start looking for somebody for, well, one's going to upgrade, of course.
Attendance, yes.
Yeah. And, and would the second one also be somebody coming in from within?
Uh, at this time, no.
Okay, so you have to look Okay, so you'd have to look for somebody.
Yes, and we would like to go out for this position as soon as possible, as Director Bonnerick said, to get them in the process. There's a lot that is going to be going on in the Recreation Center, so we want to make sure that they are a part of this as we go. So it's not that we hire somebody one month before and say, here you go, here's, you know, the Rec Center.
All right, okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I think this is a position that you, this is the position that you were going to fill from within.
Correct.
What's the grade level of the person that you're looking at to upgrade?
They're currently at a one, however, they have additional duties that were added to them with communications and website. So they were actually, they're a position one or a grade one, but they're pretty much up to a two.
That's pretty much a big jump from a one to a four.
Uh, with what they're currently making now, it's not that big of a jump with where they're at.
Right, because they're towards the middle of the range, they probably would go back to the beginning of the range if they were promoted.
The beginning of a grade four.
Yes.
Other questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move for the approval of the creation of the Leisure Services Program Manager classification with the grade, with the salary grade four.
Support.
Supported by Treasury Cabinet. Motion is approval of the creation of the Leisure Service Program Manager classification with the salary grade of four. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, we're going to add to number seven.
The next item is, again, is this at my Department of Service position as August twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth, even, created to be with it. They agreed to create the classification of Recreation Facility Manager. And this would be a new position that we would recruit from on the outside, start recruiting, and everybody would be available to, you know, they have the qualifications. But the position, once again, is, would be, the salary grade would be a grade four, which is sixty-seven thousand five ninety-eight to eighty-eight thousand six ninety-five. And at this point, I'm asking for the board to approve the creation of the Recreation Facility Manager classification with the grade of grade four.
Okay, well, I think we talked about this when we were talking about the other one, so I don't know if we really have any questions. But if you have additional questions, please, if not, I would like to know what the pleasure of the board is.
To the chair.
Treasury Cabinet.
Just a quick question, Adam. With what, trustee Jackson just said, that the previous job would come in on the lower end of the four? That would be roughly the sixty-seven? How would that work if you go out and you can't get anybody at the beginning level for this next position? How will that work?
Well, and we, we might not get somebody at the beginning. If we go out to the market and somebody applies who relatively has no experience, we would probably recommend to the, that we would then hire them at the beginning.
Okay.
If we get somebody who applies who's been managing a facility for fifteen years, we might recommend that we put them in towards the top, right? It's going to depend on who the applicant pool is, but it would be somewhere in that range.
Okay, well, no, yeah, it's just, when you're trying to be parallel as best you can, you come in with the lower and then with the other job coming in higher possibly, depending on what their history is.
But, but, but that's, but that's normal. I mean, that was really part of the goal of creating the grades when the board took that action in twenty nineteen, was to avoid the scenario that you had somebody retire who'd been working for thirty years, and then you hired somebody who was brand-new, but you're going to pay them the same, which did the person with thirty years, we needed a pay range.
Yeah, okay, all right, bye.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee King.
I move approval of the creation of the Recreation Facility Manager classification with the salary grade of four.
Support.
Supported by trustee Kennedy. So the motion is to approve the creation of the Recreation Facility Manager classification with the salary grade four. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Director Washington, number eight, please.
My last, in the title for this evening, is an amended mechanic for job description. And what the board did is, we were having, we were having problems filling the mechanic for position. And so the added qualification was added. Or possession of a current state of Michigan mechanics certification with at least two endorsements. And we currently have a current internal candidate who, if they're interested in this job, they can apply. This way they will be qualified for the position whereas the way it was originally without this qualification they were.
To the chair. Can you explain what endorsements are for this particular position?
Yes, ma'am, like if you have an endorsement to do brakes, or you have an endorsement to work on air conditioning. You know, you can legally, through the state of Michigan, you can work on brakes or air conditioning. Or you might have an endorsement for heavy-duty engine, so you can work on heavy-duty engines. Whereas if you don't have those endorsements, you can't legally do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Director Washington, when you say two endorsements, it's not, it's, there's a whole list of different things. It's not like we're asking for brakes or, or just any specifics, it's any.
Yes, prior to that qualification being amended, we're looking for two years of mechanic experience. But it was very hard to find somebody with two years of certified mechanic experience that we could actually verify. You know, we were just, we were depending on what people said instead of what they could produce. By having the mechanic's license with the two endorsements, that's something that the candidate can actually produce. And we know that person is licensed through the state of Michigan. And they're able to perform the task that they have certifications for.
Other questions from the board?
To the chair.
Trustee Jackson.
Are endorsements the equivalent of certifications that are issued by some type of formal entity? Like the state, who, who actually issues the?
You know, in order to get those endorsements, you actually take written tests to pass through the state of Michigan.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
To the chair.
Trustee, Treasury Cabinet.
I move to approve the mechanic for job description for publication.
Support.
Supported by trustee Jackson. Motion to approval of mechanic for job description for publication. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Hey, moving on, new business number nine, Director Bonnerick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, honorable board, again. I passed out to you two different handouts this evening that I'd like to review regarding the tax levy. The first is the one that looks like this. So this is, and this is information that I present in the spring as well, when we do the public hearing. But just to bring it up again, now that it's the final proposal, this is the ten-year look back on our proposed, and both what we have assessed for the tax levy and what the proposal is for 2024. So in green, you can see what is being proposed for 2024 and then what it was in the prior years. We have been able to successfully lower the millage rate once again this year, lowering it from twenty-four point six six seven seven to twenty-four point four five two seven. Where we are seeing, first, we were hit with a heavily rollback factor of one point five percent. So our charter operating millage, for example, is now capped at three point nine five mils out of the five that we are supposed to be able to levy. And that impacted the other ones as well, but that one's pretty significant, that for charter operations, we're now not even able to assess eighty percent of what statutorily we're supposed to be able to assess. When I did the calculations on what I think the impact was to our budget as a result of heavily for this year, it was around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So that's what the heavily rollback cost us in our budget this year was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For the other ones, the street lighting millage, we had raised a few years ago to help provide additional funds to pay when we reached all the light poles. We have paid ourselves back for that, so I'm recommending that we lower that down a tenth. And all of the other millages are staying the same, except for the police and fire SAD, which I'm recommending that we lower from seven point seven down to seven point three five. So we are now within on the SAD half a mil of where it was back in 2015, which is fantastic news for us. And given that it peaked in twenty twenty, eight point one five, and we've been able to bring it down almost a full mil, since that time is really pretty impressive, I think. So kudos to all of you for that. Below that, you can see what the tax have changed in taxes paid for someone is. So somebody in 2023 who had taxable value of sixty thousand, the inflation multiplier this year was five point one percent, so that's capped at five percent. So their taxable value would now be sixty-three thousand. The impact, the Redford taxes would be sixty dollars or a net increase to them of four point one percent. And then you can see the same for somebody with a taxable value of eighty-five thousand and a hundred and ten thousand. Any questions on this side of the page? If you flip the page, this may look familiar to you as well. I tried to show the impact of what has happened to our taxable and SCV values since our peak year, which was all the way back in two thousand and seven. And so I know all of you hear from residents all the time when we hear what happens when property becomes uncapped and why does that happen? And that's what this chart is showing. So if you look at the two numbers that are in peach or salmon colored, you can see that in 2024, our taxable value is still significantly less than it was back in two thousand and seven. But if you look at the two numbers in green, the value of our properties themselves is now more. So we have on a market-level perspective completely recovered from all the losses at the market level that happened back in two thousand and seven. But I still can't tax at that level. And so what happens is if you look all the way to the far right in that percentage of SCV that is taxable, the goal is that that should be one hundred percent. So as you can see over the years, that it's going down, which means that, that means the difference between the taxable value and SCV is going like this, or it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And that's why when a property becomes uncapped, the property goes from here and goes all the way up here, and that's what's creating this massive difference. So this chart really highlights that for us, that that's what happens. And I mean, it's, it's, that's at a horrible position right now that it's at sixty-one percent. I mean, that's a massive disparity between taxable values and SCV. And the only way that that is ever going to be fixed is either through action and lancing or the event that we don't want, which is a recession. We don't want that, so the only other way to fix that would be for Lansing to take the action. If we were, if our taxable values today were the same as they were in two thousand and seven, we would be able to lower our taxes by nineteen percent. And essentially, I think we would have needed the SAD. That's basically the difference from today versus two thousand and seven. That's what that chart is showing you. Any questions about that? The other one, I passed out for all of you the resolution again, because it's slightly different than what was in your packet. And I highlighted in yellow what changed, and that was because I lowered the street lighting millage from one point two five to one point one five. So it was a positive change, and that, it was a lowering of the taxes, but I wanted to make sure you had a copy of the corrected resolution. That is the only thing that is different. Other than that, I would just ask that you please approve the resolution setting the 2024 tax levy authorization.
Questions from trustees? What's going on, board, you telling me today?
They do.
A lot.
At least you're happy.
To the chair.
Treasury Cabinet.
I move to approve the adoption of the resolution authorizing the 2024 tax levy.
Support.
Supported by trustee Kennedy. Motion is approval of the adoption of the resolution authorizing 2024 tax levy. Any other questions? Very none, roll call vote.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes, thank you, Adam.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries.
Director Bonnerick.
Thank you, sir, and before I just say this, I just want to point out, this is the time of year where finance comes before you a lot. At the next board meeting, you will have the audit presentation and the board meeting after that is the mid-year budget amendments. So you get to look forward to seeing my smiling face a lot in the weeks to come. But this final item before you this evening is the 2024 pay premiums for Mape's unrepresented and appointed employees. This is really the same resolution that you have passed before in prior years. The only reason it's coming to you one more time is because, as my memo kind of reviewed, when we initially did this four years ago for police and fire, we did their four years all at one time because they did a four-year contract and Mape only did a three-year contract. Now that Mape has done their next contract, you can go ahead and approve the final year. Other than that, it's really the same resolutions what you have approved before.
Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee King.
I move approval of the resolution regarding pay premiums.
Support.
Move is supported, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Christie, yes. Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Nationals from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Clerk Christie?
Yeah, with the November election coming up, we still have some lingering issues with our polling locations. We had some that were under construction for the, the summer. And construction is in the final stages, but their, their equipment is still on the property. And we're going to have to have temporary voting locations. And we do have one piece of good news, but I'm going to turn it over to my deputy, Darian Bird, and I'll, I'll hand it over to him. And, and he, he, as far as the good news goes, Darian deserves a medal on, on this one, so I'll, I'll let him take it from here.
Well, thank you, so the difference between August and November is, actually, if you remember back in May, there was a precinct location that we actually got locked out of. They, the, the location didn't open up building for the election, so it caused a bit of a stir, so we had to relocate. I am proud to announce that that location, which is Rowpeace Outreach, will be a location again for November. So those who are at that location, you can proceed as normal. So we came to, to agreement with them. So as, as Clerk Christie had alluded to, there are two locations, that's Jefferson and that's Vandenberg. Those, those two schools will be temporarily moved this time. two schools will be temporarily moved this time. And so Jefferson will be at Pierce, and then Vandenberg will be at World Peace Outreach, along with that normal polling location. So if you live in those locations, be on the lookout. You'll be receiving postcards soon, where you need to be with a map that shows you where to go. Thank you.
And I just, I need you to stay up here, because you deserve a lot of credit for getting World Peace Outreach, you know, back into the fold. We really wanted them to be part of our community. And boy, what they did to us, and you secured enough assurances where we feel comfortable trusting them for being a polling location again. And I think that that was, that was huge on your part, Darian.
Thank you.
You really deserve recognition for that.
Thank you.
Any other announcements from the board? Hearing none. I have just one. Yesterday, we met with Priority Waste. We've been having a lot of problem with trash and recycling and yard waste pickups since Priority took over. Myself, Director Dennis and Director Bonnerak met with them yesterday to talk about our problems, and to let them know that we are very displeased with the service. They have not been giving us proper service in our community. They brought along with them the, Mr. Braxton Mashburn. He's the Priority Waste Chief Operating Officer. We, he told us what they would be willing to do to get us on track. We're supposedly, everything's supposed to be running smooth by the 24th. In the meantime, they are assigning different people to check to see if garbage has been picked up. And because of the poor services, as far as not being able to see a whole street, or maybe a neighborhood that never got touched, we are having our own people go out there and go through the areas that were supposed to be picked up to make sure that if they're missed, that we know. This comes at no cost to us, because Priority is going to absorb the cost of wages, the cost for us to have our people out. But part of that is because we have not been very successful with what they told us. So I do have a letter from Priority on the back table, for anybody to grab it on the way out. Tomorrow, this letter will be going on social media. It'll be posted on our face, our website, so that all the residents understand what's going on. Because we are doing something, and we continue to look at things. So if the 24th comes, and things aren't what they're supposed to be, then we're going to move to a different phase, because we have to have trash picked up and have our neighborhoods clean and safe. So that's what I got. More to follow up Priority. Hopefully, everybody will be calling, telling me everything got picked up. Oh, Oktoberfest is next weekend. October...
September.
Oh, I thought she said Oktoberfest. Our Oktoberfest in September will be next weekend, on the 20th and 21st. Thanks for sitting through a longer meeting than normal. Appreciate all you being here and being part of our community. But no further businesses. Meeting is adjourned.